Okay. Then we have all of us for now. I was just saying Sarah is going to be a few minutes late. So I will call to order the regional Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee meeting. I will welcome our large audience. Right, exactly. And note that we are being recorded. Court, do you want to call Concord?
Sure, and I will call the Concord Public Schools School Committee to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Anderson, I'm here, present.
Present.
Out, present.
Mustafi, present.
Rainey, present.
Thank you. Now, before we move to executive session, what is our process tonight? Do we have a separate link? Or breakout? Do we know?
Usually Erin puts us in a breakout room.
Yep, Erin's here to do breakout rooms.
Perfect.
We only do other things when she's not available.
And when you show up late, I can tell you.
I love myself.
If you show up late, she makes it easy. Last week, I just, whatever the last time was that I had to be late. I showed up into this one and then Erin sent me to the breakout room immediately. So she will.
And Jared's coming soon. We literally, I was still on with maintenance while popping in here.
Wow.
So on behalf of both committees, then, I'll entertain a motion that the Concord School Committee and the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct strategy sessions with all non-union personnel, and purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with collective bargaining units as follows. Concord Teachers Association, Concord Carlisle Teachers Association, Local 1703, State Council 93, CCHS Building Service Workers Maintenance, or litigation regarding termination of the Edco Collaborative and the case of, I, forgive me, let me see, L period Y period V Kestner Kruger CCTV Inc., Town of Concord, and the Concord Carlisle Regional School District, and return to open session at 6:00 P.M.
So I think you said you'd entertain a motion, so.
That is correct. All right, we have it moved.
For both committees.
And a second, please.
Good for both.
And a roll call, please.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
Out, I for both. Mustafi, I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you. Sarah, do you want to get things started?
Yeah, yeah. I was, yeah, okay. So hi, welcome. It's 6:00. Welcome back to the May 18th Concord Carlisle Regional and Concord School Committee, School Committees Meeting. I would like to make a few changes to the agenda today. I propose a few changes to the agenda, and I'd like to start with a recognition, if we might, for our student representatives, Linda and Amy. Do we have to vote to put that on to the agenda?
Yes, I would move that we move a recognition to the beginning of the agenda for both committees.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
Out, I for both. Mustafi, I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
And Wilson for region, so. Thank you, welcome. Linda and Amy, where are, there we go, there you are. We're so glad you could make it tonight, that this, that this worked just before your Senate meeting. So this is great. I know you guys are really, really busy, and I'm really happy that we didn't have to have you come the night before your first, your last day of school. So, so thanks. I just wanted to say quickly, like, thank you so much. You guys have been wonderful this year. You have been honest, you have been, you've been proactive, you have been, I mean, I'm sad that, well, I've met Linda in person at Clark Farm. Amy, I don't think we, I don't know if I'll ever, I'll see you in person before the year is out. What a strange year, but thank you, guys. You've been phenomenal, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Sarah. I, I would certainly like to echo that and say you have been fearless in bringing your opinions, both personal and on behalf of the entire student body to us. Sometimes people are timid when they come to these public meetings. You are anything but timid, Amy and Linda. You have spoken your truths, you have expected us to not only listen, but to actually hear you, and you've encouraged us to do just that. You've taught us a lot. I want you to know you've set the bar very high for whoever follows you. And I think what we all know about you is you will continue to set the bar high wherever you go. So we want to give you this tribute. We want to really have you hear us now that we, we are thankful for your service. We, we honor your service, and we hope that the people who do follow you have learned a lot from you, just as we have. Thank you.
Can I jump in too and add a couple of words? I want to say, I want to jump off of what Court said about setting the bar high, which I couldn't agree more about. I wanted to even a step further and say, I feel like you've redefined the bar and the, and the sport that the bar is in even. You guys have, have kind of redefined almost the role of school committee liaisons here, and the initiative you have taken has really impressed me all year. And so I want you to graduate knowing that you've left a legacy here, and, and not only big shoes to fill, but really a wonderful role for the school committee liaisons to play in bringing us true, genuine feedback and having really heartfelt and productive conversations. And so I thank you for that. And it's been really neat to see the progression of that from what the role used to be even to, to what you two have made it. So kudos to you, and, and thank you, and good luck in all of your future endeavors, where you will redefine the, the concept of success and efficiency for many other groups and organizations to come.
In addition to the individual contributions you've made to the school committee, you also proved to be a really dynamic team together. So we, we know you appreciate each other, and we're glad you do, because we appreciate it in the fact that you work together so, so effectively, and, and model that kind of teamwork for everybody who witnessed these meetings that you and I come to. And we noticed that we've got parents in the room. We know they are bursting with pride, just as we are bursting with thanks, and they should be. So we, we thank them for, thank you very much for turning on your camera, sir. We, we thank them for helping to set the stage to, to bring two magnificent leaders our way for, for the time that we've been able to benefit from you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for your kind words, and also being so open to listening to what Amy and I have had to share with you all. I know this year has been very unprecedented, and maybe also what Amy and I had, have shared with you all has also been unprecedented, but the fact that you guys have just been so open to hearing it is much appreciated.
And just while you're on, you know, one step further, that you don't always see the change that happens based on what you say here, because I know sometimes you do, and other times maybe you can't, but I, I found, you know, Mr. Mistrillo and I have talked about this role for really since my arrival, and how could we define it and recruit kids who would meet, you know, the vision we had? And you've just flipped that totally upside down, and you, you took, you created a vision that I don't think we ever could have come up with, and now one that we really see as a role of advocacy and student voice and, you know, real efficacy, and we're going to want to continue that. There are many nights, you can't see me because I'm on Zoom, and I'm sitting here texting Mike Mistrillo about what you're talking about, and he's actively, you know, already working on it before we're even off the evening meeting. And it definitely has mattered. So whether it's been short little things we could fix, or bigger picture things that you've set the groundwork for, it's been just really important, and you've mattered, and I think you've set the stage for this, this role to be something really influential for a long time to come. So, thank you, thank you both for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring our best wishes to the Student Senate, and tell them we're expecting great things next year. All right, and they, and they have you to thank.
And enjoy your last week.
Yes, congratulations.
And best wishes.
Thank you, Amy, thank you, Linda.
I do see that we have Dorothy Presser on as well already, so I might also propose that we move up the old business item of superintendent evaluation to now.
So moved.
Second.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
Out, I for both. Mustafi, I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
And Wilson for region, thank you. Thank you, Dorothy, for joining us tonight.
You are most welcome, happy to be here.
Especially in a last-minute way like this. So we really appreciate it. Alexa and I just wanted to, you know, we wanted to follow up on the update that we did last time, because there were some questions, and it really wasn't the time to go into them. You know, this might be, and we talked about this, this may be a very quick discussion here, but we wanted to kind of make sure we're on the same page and then move on. And because there were some questions last time, we thought, well, it would be great if Dorothy's here in case there are questions that Alexa and I need help answering. So I'll pass it off to Alexa, but she's going to kind of finish our update here, and then we'll just make sure we're all on the same page.
Sure. Well, I went through the groundwork that Heather and I did to create a much more clear picture about the rating system. I hope you all got my updated memo today, the changes. I tried to be as clear as possible, or like bolded and in red. And Dorothy has seen that memo. She, just so everybody knows, we, we did share it with her as well. So, you know, thank you, guys, for the people who did reach out to me last week. But not everybody did, so I just didn't know if there were any other questions that might be lingering out there, you know, that due to schedules and whatnot, people couldn't have gotten answered last week, and we just wanted this final opportunity to just make sure that we're all on the same page. Does everyone feel comfortable what is outlined in the memo?
Alexa, do you want to highlight it quickly, just so?
No, I would, I would highlight it simply because we're referencing an item that was not.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah, okay, got it, got it.
One more discussion, just a clarification.
Let me just pull it up. Okay, so originally, in the memo, we provide some background about the available ratings that we can use to evaluate our superintendent. And we discuss in the memo the difference between the ratings that we have for the standards. The standards include instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Those are the sort of four macro categories that we have. And then underneath those, we have what are called those focus indicators that are based off of the goals that we set throughout the year. So the big change was in the discussion around what, what ratings would trigger what is called a directed growth plan. I think every superintendent would agree that they, or would agree that they strive to have a self-directed growth plan. And a directed growth plan is one that requires more sort of intervention and collaboration with the evaluator, which is us, the school committee. So we did clarify, I had originally thought that any overall rating of needs improvement with, towards any of the standards would trigger a directed growth plan, but it turns out that it's only the instructional leadership standard that would in fact trigger this intervention of a directed growth plan. And instead, for, for standards two, three, and four, a needs improvement rating wouldn't necessarily trigger a directed growth plan, but it does indicate an area of concern. So that's really it. I apologize for that slip up, but I'm glad that it's clarified. And, yeah, I think it's, to me, it's pretty clear. I just want to make sure that it is for everybody, because I know, you know, it was a, it was a complicated, that first discussion was kind of complicated, so.
And I would also tease, I think that was great, Alexa, thank you. I would also just highlight, I think, from our conversation with Dorothy, and she can certainly jump in or correct me here, that one of our big understandings coming out of it was that, that needs, you know, in terms of giving some feedback or corrections or anything, that needs improvement means an area that we feel like there's an issue that needs, that, that there's concern and needs to be dealt with, whereas the comment area is a place to address, you know, maybe a few things that could have been done better, even if you think the overall area is proficient, and there isn't an overall concern. So if there are a couple of things, you know, that could have been done differently or could be worked on, that those, that the comment area is perfect for that, and that the overall rating of needs improvement versus proficient is more about the, you know, the high-level performance. Does that, is that right, Dorothy? Did I?
Yeah, you know, and I would say make use of the descriptors for the various indicators. They'll give you direction. And the other thing to, to think about, and hope I'm going to clarify and not confuse here, is you have the goals and you have the standards.
Yeah.
Goals generally evolve from year to year. They're based on your district plan. There's work done every year to get to the goals. If you think about the superintendent goals as, what's the work of the superintendent to help you get to those district goals that you're working on? So the, there, there may be times, particularly this year, when, when the goals may not have proceeded at, at the expected pace, but when you're looking at the standards, you're really looking more at the, the skills, the competency, the proficiency of the work the superintendent is doing. So you sort of separate, those two come together in the end, but they're, they're really looking, it's a nuance, but they're looking at somewhat different things.
Yep, definitely, thank you. Sorry, Court, go ahead.
No, I was saying that that's helpful. Thank you very much, Dorothy, and thank you for joining us tonight. So in answer to your question, I'm clear on this. I appreciate your work. I also appreciate that we've got a very clear calendar in front of us. And the superintendent has been exceedingly cooperative in working with us on this calendar, because it's seven members and a lot, a lot of work to be done to conduct this evaluation. We, we do it as a, because it's what a learning institution does, but also because it's a DESI requirement, and so all of this effort is designed to see that we do it well, and that the district and we and Dr. Hunter are the beneficiaries, and I think she understands it that way as well. So thank you.
Great, awesome.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dorothy.
You're very welcome.
Are you good, Cynthia? Everybody's good? Okay.
And, and I'll just note, since I know Fatima had some questions last time and couldn't join us, I'm happy to reach out to her later and make sure she doesn't have questions, but it sounds like we're all on the same page at this point.
Great.
Dorothy, so much.
Dorothy, thank you so much for the last-minute appearance.
You're very welcome. It was a rare, a rare opening in my schedule. I'm glad I was able to turn on. Thank you.
We love it.
Thank you, Dorothy, for the clarification, it really helped.
Okay.
Setting goals and trying to figure it out, you know, as the work does not end, and continuously to change, those, those goals in the district continue to change, and especially in the time of pandemic, there was a lot of adjustments, and the pace definitely changed in different areas, just to meet everybody's needs. So I appreciate that clarification when it comes to where, where this, setting out of the goals and understanding of what proficient and what needs improvement naturally means. Thanks.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
We can keep you too long, Dorothy. I think I'll go get some dinner if you.
Okay, good.
Thanks very much, everybody.
Thanks so much, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so back to our regular agenda now. So I know that when, when I joined the region over the summer, there was a flurry of communication coming in about the Indigenous Peoples' Day, and how, how is the second Monday of October celebrated? We heard from many members of the community, middle schoolers, parents, non-parent community members, and we talked a little bit about it in the fall, of how would we address this? And we thought we should probably talk with the rest of the town, talk with Concord and Carlisle, and see if everyone, you know, can we, can we come to some kind of understanding altogether? And so then you guys gave me the directive, the permission to reach out to the select boards, and I emailed them and explained our thoughts that we would like to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on Columbus Day. And, and they have added it to their calendar now. And so we just wanted to kind of circle back on this and, and discuss it amongst our committee, and then possibly, I think, have a vote next week, next, at our next meeting. About it, so.
So, and, sorry, Sarah, when you say they've added it to their calendar, the select board has decided to change Concord's terming to Indigenous Peoples' Day? Or they've added a discussion to their calendar?
Oh, no, they have, they, they made an Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation.
Okay.
Where, yeah, Indigenous Peoples' Day is celebrated with Columbus Day on, on, on the second Monday of, of October. I can get up the language of that proclamation.
Well, you're looking at that, I think tonight's conversation is another opportunity to acknowledge the, the thoughtful work of our eighth graders. Did they speak with a perfectly single voice? Of course not, but they were all very articulate and overall persuasive that this deserves the town's attention, and I think the select board recognized that to Sarah's point.
All right, I'm going to have to find their exact proclamation for next meeting, because I, it's not, I think I have to go through their minutes.
Cynthia, have my email up. If I can't find it, I'll let you know.
Dr. Hunter, could we expect that you'll have a revised calendar for us to consider adopting next week?
Yeah, so what we did today, attached to the agenda, is, is a different one than what was originally there. The one that's there right now has both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day on that particular date in October, for you to give guidance on how you want it recorded.
So theirs is, they say, may be proclaimed, proclaimed that the second Monday of October henceforth be commemorated in Concord as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the Town of Concord recognizes the position of Indigenous peoples as native to these lands, and that Concord is Indigenous land. And the Town of Concord celebrates and honors the foundational contributions of Indigenous peoples to the history of the town, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and our country. And the Town of Concord encourages our public schools to observe Indigenous Peoples' Day with appropriate instruction to celebrate the culture, diversity, and history of Indigenous peoples.
That's great, thank you, that makes it very clear. So there's no reference to Columbus Day still in the town description of that day now? It's Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday, is it, of October? Right?
I'm not sure, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah, I think we need clarity on that.
Yeah, because what we know is what the proclamation says, not what is now published.
So we have to decide, what we're voting on next week is whether to call that holiday Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Or and.
Or a combination of both?
That's correct.
I'll need to confirm with the town, because they didn't have a discussion, my memory, it was a, it was just.
Consent agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there, is there an obligation, because we are part of the town, to follow the direction of the town, so as to prevent confusion, or anything like that?
Not a, not a formal obligation, but we are expected to be familiar with town government practices, and they with school practices, and seek alignment where it's optional. Here, it's optional.
But it would be in good faith?
Right, so we don't have to, but it would probably be helpful to align with the town.
I think they did.
Ideally, it would be good to.
They addressed it because Sarah reached out to them.
Because we reached out to them.
I had reached out to them, hoping that our town, saying our, we hope that our towns can enjoy the second Monday in October as a day to reflect on our rich and complex history.
Right.
So I didn't, I didn't urge in any particular way, resolutionally.
So it therefore would likely be wise to wait to see what they adopt officially?
Well, I think Cynthia can make inquiries on our behalf and advise us.
They did adopt, we're not sure they deleted.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's what we're just, that's what we're talking about.
So we know it will be Indigenous Peoples' Day in some form, we just don't know if it's only or and, is that kind of what you're?
Correct.
Right, okay, exactly.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, good.
We'll get some more information on that, and, and talk a little bit again next week, and hopefully vote.
Great.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to propose another agenda move, because I just connected the dots, and, Dr. Hunter, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're very clear that the Capitol Plenary Task Force is just between the select board and the Town Concord School Committee, not the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee. Is that correct?
Yes, and we, we talked about that as chairs, and there was a thought that it might still be of interest for Carlisle to listen in.
Okay. But I just want to be very clear.
Unless you want to check, don't correct that, Carlisle members, if that's not.
We just wanted to know if there's stuff that, that, that we should be involved in. If we're not, if we're not participatory in the conversation, then I think we can move it until later.
We can't hold the, the regional school committees feet to the fire, you know, we just cannot. It's just, you're.
Not within the same process.
Oh, I want to make it very clear, because I want people watching this meeting getting confused that this is a regional matter. It just isn't, so.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, there's nothing, if there, I wasn't sure if there was anything on the plan that was going to, to.
No.
And so if there isn't, then move it to the.
Very clear, I think, in our, this is what they're going to take back, and recommendations to the select board, that we are very clear.
Yeah.
And we keep talking about the, the high school as a, as a test case, and it really wouldn't have been for this work we're doing, so.
Okay. So is there a motion to move the Capitol Task Force update to the Concord School Committee portion of the evening?
So moved.
I think I can second.
I'll agree, Anderson, I.
I for both.
Out, I for both.
Rainey, I for both.
Wilson for region.
Mustafi for region. We still have to vote for it, right?
Yes, because you're taking it off.
Thank you for moving.
We're taking it off our agenda, very good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. So that means that we are up to Jared, right? Yeah, CCHS variance report.
Excellent, all right. See if I can share my screen. Perfect.
One sec. Still having technical issues. We'll zoom. Great, you can all see that?
Yeah, if you can.
All.
We can magnify it on our end.
There we go.
Good. So here is the latest variance report as of mid-May. We're currently at 1.7 unencumbered. It's a little misleading. The reason for that is we, and I think I've stated before, we need to end in a surplus to cover the deficit, not the deficit. Well, the deficit in interest this year for that we said when we built the budget, we're about $80,000 short in interest. But we also have to have money left over to cover the E and D that is reserved to reduce for next year. So we have to end with plus or minus about $400,000. So in addition, we are still working on, like I said before, other years, I would know within 1% or 2% of where we're going to end around this time because we're still dealing with so many grants and just trying to do our offsets, do our offsets through revolving accounts, figure out, you know, our total spring expenses, our spring sports, food service, et cetera. This number is still a little higher than, than it probably should be. But the good takeaway is, is we're in excellent shape. We still will end in a surplus. This number also includes, we meant to mention this last week, but we have 370 computers in here that is encumbered. It's not, it's not an expenditure yet. So that was about $368,000. That is something that, if you remember last year, we prepaid that, that left open, that money available for next year's out of this year's budget. And we'd like to go ahead and continue that. So that is part of the encumbrances, but is taken away from the available balance. So what I plan on doing for at least to kickstart the meeting next week is talk about, come closer to where I think we're going to land. I am working on getting all of the special ed tuitions and number that I can eventually, hopefully, recommend to prepay as well as a list of some other things and start that conversation. Again, start the conversation about stabilization account, et cetera. So again, we're in good shape, especially for May 18th. And I think it's really good news.
Jared, do you intend to bring the computer discussion back to us next week? Is that?
We were hoping that, since it's really just a general fund expense and not necessarily a school committee approval, we don't need the official approval. I think we would just wanted to tell you that it's, that it's in there. And Dr. Hunter, feel free to step in.
Yeah, I think it is an opportunity for you to tell us to hold up and wait till next week till you have the big picture. Otherwise, it's, I think it's definitely our recommendation to go ahead with it. But if you want to make it part of the big picture discussion next week, that's absolutely fine.
So I, I'd like, just personally, I'd like to affirm that yes, you have, certainly have the authority to do so. And I think the committee would benefit from having that larger context before you make the move.
Yeah, so we'll bring you that as a piece of the list next week so you see the whole, whole status of everything.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it. That won't, Jared, that won't hold anything up from the timeline that you're managing on that?
It will not, and the quote is still good.
Okay, thank you. If that changes, just let us know.
So I think pretty much what Court said, so if we could get a memo sort of outlining everything.
Yes, we'll get that too.
End of year sort of presentation like I did last year, maybe even a little PowerPoint that I can, I can sort of tell you the different scenarios. I speak better in numbers than memos, but I can do a memo as well. But I think I can put it all right in front of you. Before Friday, I'm going to tell you it's going to be very, very difficult. I'm going to get as much as I can. I will be ready for Tuesday. But we're.
Let me ask you this. Does it have to be done next Tuesday? When's our next meeting?
I'd like the conversation to start only because I'd just like a conversation to start, especially if we're going to be putting money in stabilization accounts. I'm going to get this, I'm going to change the screen here.
Pretty important stuff, and I realize everybody's slammed. But we would have, in my opinion, I'd have to get it by, no later than Monday.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, to your question, we don't have a firmed up calendar passed next week. So it's a couple of other things on Tuesday night occasionally I was going to try to get to. But if we need to meet, we need to meet.
Yeah, next Tuesday.
We have June 8 and 15 on the calendar and not, not June 1 at the present time, you know.
Yeah.
And I think today was, was it today that was an ad? One of these was?
Today was the ad, yeah.
Okay.
That we can pull together, I think, I think it makes sense if we could put it on the agenda for next week. We'll do as best we can to get the information to you. You don't have to make decisions next week. So if it's, you know, not, not as prepared as you were hoping, we can visit it again. It seems like there's big decisions to make, so maybe planning for multiple conversations could be a good thing.
And we'll get, we'll get, we'll get as much done as we can next week, Jared.
Yep.
Sounds good.
And the only reason, it's not that I can't do the work by then, I just will have a much better picture probably on the 25th.
Fair enough. Okay. Okay.
Great, thanks. Where are we?
So I think, do we have other questions about the variance report? Jared, did you have anything that you wanted to highlight in that we've referenced the balance and decisions to be made? Grants? Can we anticipate you're going to be able to close out fiscal '21 with all those many, many grants to your, your necessary degree of satisfaction?
I feel that way, especially at the high school. I think the high school are going to be able to carry, carry over more in the ESAR funds than maybe the CPS side. The CPS side is still, that's, and we can talk about that later, we're much healthier right now at the high school. It doesn't say we're not healthy at CPS. But the, the high school side, we're seeing a healthier balance. And yeah. But I do feel that we should still be able to carry over a max circuit breaker, a healthy athletic, a healthy food service, and hopefully a 4.99 E and D.
And to prove I have a short memory, but I read your stuff, remind us what RANs and BANs are?
So it's short-term and long-term borrowing is the high level view.
Thank you. That'll do. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
But I am going to have more information about the bond sale. We're actually at 11 o'clock tomorrow. We're gonna, we will get the results of that the bond sale, that hopefully we have about $3 million in savings. And now I will have a memo certainly on that by Friday to you all because, and that, that should be really good news for the region.
Yeah, that's excellent. Thank you. And we've got similar good news coming from the town side. So Concord should be confident we've got the right fiscal expertise in the schools and the town in regard to eyeing those opportunities. So thanks.
Thank you. If there are no other questions about the variance report, then I will accept a motion to adjourn the region.
I move to adjourn the region.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
That I.
Safi, I.
Rainey, I.
Wilson, I. I don't think my family's going to believe this.
And that's why we called another meeting so we wouldn't have to do the marathon, so.
Right.
Success.
All right, so the Concord School Committee remains in session. And I will move that we change the agenda such that we proceed with MSBA as outlined in the agenda, followed by the CPS variance report, and then insert the item, the Concord Capital Plan. Is there a second?
Sure, second.
And roll call?
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
That I.
Rainey, I.
Okay, so thank you. So in terms of the MSBA, each year since we commenced the efforts some years ago to bring forth a new middle school, we've been invited, as a matter of course, by the MSBA to state and restate and restate our statement of interest. And Dr. Hunter, can you bring us up to date on your latest inquiry, inquiry, if you will, or report, invitation, I should say?
The annual invitation. As referenced, we have submitted a statement of interest for the middle school project in 2017, 18, 19, and 20, and then declined every time. Obviously, we've started on our own and made, made gains towards that with the 1.5 million that the town allocated. It's important to note, and we noted this a year ago and we submitted anyway, that whatever work we're doing now under the 1.5, MSBA will not honor. It can inform, but it can't replace. So if you were to suddenly be accepted, and I'll get to my opinion on whether that's going to happen or not, you would have to actually revert back and go out and find, go through the OPM and the architect process and start from those again and just use whatever we've done through SMMA and Hill as reference. But you'd be, be going back to ground zero. You know, I've spoken a couple of times now with, with MSBA. Pre-COVID, they would make the phone call and talk with you on what was happening and why. COVID has altered that a little, although a year ago we got asked where we were in our process and they were watching funds and wondering if any districts were going to withdraw. Typically, the response we hear is that it's every year based on the other submissions that they receive. And they analyze need and really it's competitive within those submissions. They're getting somewhere between 16 and 18 submissions a year for 12 to 15 slots, depending on the scope of the projects. It's based on 1% of the annual sales tax, so there's usually $500 to $600 million available to them for all the projects they're going to do annually. So it can get skewed some if you get a big urban project. Those urban high schools have been drawing two, maybe $300 million even. So that really reduces what they've got for availability. I, I don't see us being invited in. I think if it was going to happen, it would have happened. The feedback, you know, off the record feedback, even when they did a last site visit, which was a year and a half ago, with escalation factored in, in the delay, we would experience if we were to suddenly be invited in, we'd, at this point, save funds by sticking with the path we started on our own just because of the time delay and we'd be years out if, if they invited us in and we've already gotten started. So I don't see us in, being invited in. The, the answer we hear from them is it's always based on who's in the pool in a given year. So I will say that's, that's what we're going to say in public. I don't think it's, it's not a huge lift for us to resubmit. We essentially cut and paste and send it again. What it does do is leave this unanswered question over the project and especially with how far we are down the road now. And they were, they were very delayed. We just got word a month ago that we weren't accepted into the 2020 project, which is at least a six, about a six-month delay from normal. So our, my, Jared and I, I'll speak for Jared, I would recommend not submitting this time and staying the course with the project that we started with local funding.
Thank you. Questions, comments, informal opinions before we press on? Cynthia?
Have we consulted with the select board on this?
What, what we've decided to do is start here. The select board is going to have a similar conversation. They're waiting to hear from you before they schedule that. I've been coordinating with the town manager.
Okay. I guess it's a.
It takes votes from both of you, so we decided to start here since it's a school project.
Oh, go ahead, Cynthia.
No, I'm of a mind to submit. And I think, can it be withdrawn after the town vote?
I think so, yes. Yep.
That would be.
It might be simultaneous, depending on when we land on the town vote, which looks like it's going to be sometime winter-ish. Usually by then they're giving awards out. Usually I've been notified, pre-COVID, I was always notified right around Thanksgiving. So by then they would have probably processed it and done the work if they're getting back on track.
In my mind, we, if we don't, we're completely assuming a positive town vote. And I don't think, as an elected body, we can make that assumption.
Yeah, I don't know that I was, per se, but I hear why you say that. Yeah. I'm hoping, obviously, but I wasn't assuming it per se as one in hand with the other.
Well, it's interesting that you bring it up, Cynthia. I mean, I I was certainly supportive of this too. But I, you know, let's say for a second that the vote failed. Let's look at what the next steps would be and whether inclusion in MSBA would, would be useful at that point. Right, exactly. Who knows? I, I would think that following the lines of, you know, does it make sense to go back and spend more money with MSBA to get them to reimburse part of it? You know, if this failed, we'd have to go back and, you know, think about how we come back to the town with a new program or plan. I think if we stuck with what we had, it would be, you know, trying to get a, a plan slightly revised off of what we had, maybe to bring something new versus if we went with the MSBA at that point, we are back to square one. I don't know, I'm just kind of, I'm wondering, just kind of wondering out loud. Let's see, would it, even if we refuse, does that still offer us a lot of value if we were accepted somehow in that long shot?
Those decisions are really up to the select board and the building committee. But this decision is more in our arena.
Right, this decision, if you were to submit, it takes the vote of the school committee and the select board.
Right, right.
I don't, I'm uncomfortable, well, I'm uncomfortable with the timeline. You know, so if we were to submit and have the unlikely occurrence that we're invited into the process and that happens in November, I would be uncomfortable pressing forward with that route before a vote. You know, it's funny with this building. So many things I think are being, are complicated by timelines. You know, when I listen to your meetings, folks in the building committee, we, I've noticed a lot of times it's difficult to move things forward because we have a lot of this, I hate this saying, but chicken and egg kind of things. We can't really ascertain A before we know B. And, and I think the, what, after being, listening to that so often, I would hate to, my, I get what Cynthia is saying because I, I do get it. And if the timeline matched where we had the vote in November when the decision in December, well, even that wouldn't match because then we'd be committed to the vote. I don't know, this kind of stinks. I know that's particularly, I'm talking it, as I talk it out here, I realize how complicated this is.
Nobody disagreed with your sentiments. Nobody disagreed with your sentiments.
I know, it's not very sophisticated, but hmm, I don't know. This is really, really tricky. And I think, you know, when I think about sort of the history even of like, not to get too weird, the history of our country, I mean, all of these buildings were built at the same time. There are so many buildings in our, in our same bucket here that are failing buildings. I just, I don't know, I just, I'm inclined to concur with Lori and say, the likelihood that we get accepted is so low. Is it worth it? And I know that it's not a big lift, like you say, but I don't know. I'm not being helpful.
No, I think we invited the exchange of ideas because this is complex and it's a judgment call that this school committee and the select board is gonna be expected to make. You know, when I hear Cynthia's case, I think, yes, any possible due diligence is smart due diligence. We should give the town a backstop, even if it's a small chance of a backstop. But my, my thinking doesn't stop there. I'm also mindful of the fact that our chances are exceedingly remote at best. Each year, we've looked at how many are in the queue. We've made our assessments of the condition of those buildings, the magnitude of the need in those towns as compared to our own district, and come to the conclusion that it's no surprise that we stay far down in the queue. We've looked at other districts needier than ours, or equally needy on the face of it, who have been in the queue for 11 years, reapplying, reapplying, reapplying. In terms of whether the project will prevail, well, nobody knows, but we intend it to. And the FinCom and the select board, I think of late, have tried to give us their read on how to get this successfully through with their full-fledged support. I think it's premature to say that the building committee has confidence they can deliver to the wants and expectations of the FinCom and the select board. I wish we had more time so we had more clarity on that answer. We're only entering into schematic design where a lot happens, and a lot happens that can impact cost. Personally, if I had higher confidence that we could achieve the, what I consider to be the simply stated hope, let's call it a hope of the select board and the FinCom, and that is $100 million project born on our shoulders alone, it would be easier to, for me to agree that we should not pursue another SOI. I do not personally consider the 1.5 sunk cost as a big driver in my decision. Because the trade-off to anybody with a pencil is, success with the SOI means delays, cost escalations, but also significant state aid to offset it. So that's another way of saying, this is just as complex for me, Alexa, as it is for you.
Good. I have a question. To borrow, like, probably it's now like a 30-year-old term that I don't even know if it's still used anymore, to borrow like a term when you're thinking of college, like financial aid, is the MSBA like a needs-blind process? So for example, as a district that is potentially wealthier than some of the other districts that would be also submitting to this program, is that a factor in their decision-making process, or is it solely based on the condition of the building?
I think the best answer is, good question.
They are adamant that they are basing on the condition of the buildings and compare across the scope of requests.
Yes, that's the correct answer.
That's what Jack...
Positively.
Diane Sullivan has said it to me at least five to six times in the last couple of years.
Yeah. So...
I think to me, the question is not just, I think Corporate's of a good point of the sunk cost. I tend to not worry about sunk costs as much as, would this really be a benefit to us? I think it's a question of if we had to go back and start over now, it's not the, oh, we spent a million and a half already. It's the, okay, but from here forward, would we actually save money by doing this? Because yes, they would cover some, but there's also cost escalation, and we'd be, you know, two years behind where we are now. And so, is it actually worth it? Even if we get in at this point? And to me, it seemed like my initial take on that was that it probably wouldn't be.
I have another question, maybe to court, mostly because he's on that design part. I know so many people in town who have been, I don't want to use the word critical, because maybe that's too harsh, but critical of aspects of the high school that have been perceived to be inadequate. Would we be similarly constrained in what we could deliver and design? And do you have confidence that, given the MSBA does have more stringent requirements, regulations, I don't know the exact precise word, that we would be able to, from a design perspective, be able to deliver the educational plan in the same way that we have been doing it on our own?
I'll give you my opinion. It's an opinion, no. We have a really ambitious and appropriately ambitious instructional space summary, which supports nine intact teams, in the way that Lori and her team envision is gonna hold us in good stead now and in the future, and allow for growth over the course of half a century. That would be unlikely under the MSBA. Doesn't mean we wouldn't get a good school, just means that we wouldn't have the flexibility and the alternatives that this building now affords us.
It would not be reimbursable.
Yeah, right.
And I'm just gonna say, if you're referring to the gym?
No, I'm referring to the way that we have designed the school in order to, like, fulfill that really, what I mean, that I'm very supportive and of the philosophy of the teaming and just sort of how we've done it seems so specific, that I'm more concerned with that. I mean, and I know everyone at the high school level focuses on the gyms and the auditorium and all that as, you know, maybe being a little undersized at the high school. I wasn't speaking about that specifically, Cynthia. I was more the way that we've been able to conceptualize the educational plan.
Because honestly, I don't think we would really change the classrooms at the high school.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah, no. And the auditorium too, I think, has been just a source of things that I've heard anecdotally in my...
Well, that's a result of the fact that we're $10 million over.
Nonetheless, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So do we need to take a vote tonight? We don't have one on our agenda, do we?
We do not. Let me find, the deadline is the later, mid-June, Jared?
June 25th, 11:59 PM.
Later in June.
Plenty of time.
So you have a little time.
But I do think, so would then, this force, are they, is the select board ready for us to vote or have a conversation?
I think either one.
Okay.
I think either one. I could, we could make that request, maybe chair to chair, to see if they want to put it on their agenda, and they could have the same conversation. If that's helpful.
I think it would be wise to simply reach out to my counterpart and let her know that these conversations are underway and that we haven't set a date for a vote.
And it would be curious in their input?
I'm sure they'll be forthcoming, yeah. Any other informational pieces that would be useful for us tonight?
Jared, not to put you on the spot, sorry. But just in terms of construction, and I mean, you have a little more insight into this than we do sometimes, do you have any thoughts on this kind of thing looking forward? You know, given the time delay and escalation and all that, do you have a feel for whether you think it would be worth it if we even got in?
I mean, I think everyone had great points. I do think that the cost escalation is a real factor. You know, the MSBA timeline is slow. I don't know if, I almost feel like it could, close to be a wash, you know, based on the cost escalations. I mean, I feel everyone made great points. I really feel that way. I could, you know, I, pros and cons to both, but I ultimately think that, I just don't, I don't think we'd get in. But I also don't want to assume a yes vote.
Right. Okay, thank you, that's helpful. Just wanted to get your insight, too.
But as far as the process of me doing the statement of interest and putting it in, it's, I've become a pro at it, I think it's not gonna take very long.
We won't be asking a lot of you to do it, but it's the question of, yeah, is it worth it for other reasons? Okay. Lori, any other thoughts from you after hearing this before we?
No, no.
All right, I'm gonna ask, then let me ask my colleagues on the committee and Lori this question. Are you comfortable with leaving it to your chair, co-chair, and superintendent as to when and how to bring this back? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. We're gonna move on, Jared, to the CPS variance, please.
Do you want to do that before the task force, or?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. Let me pull it up. Great. Blowing up a little bit? Great. So similar story here, we are, we're in a really good position for this time of year. I will say for the CPS side, there's, there are payroll encumbrances that are happening since the students came back, that, I should say, payroll expenses that are not encumbered. And Ian and I are working on whether to continue to charge them to the general fund, or if this is something that we want to dip into, the ESAR funds that we wanted to try and preserve for next year and the year after. That being said, we are gathering, we're in balance, as you can see, both budgets were in balance, so we will be getting special ed tuitions that we can look into prepaying, as well as a list of other things. Again, this is not necessarily some, we will not have a surplus at CPS. I feel strongly about that. But, and we also may need to dip into a little bit of the ESAR funds, but not a ton. We will still have a healthy, healthy grant, ESAR grants, moving forward. And this is a little more difficult than the high school, just because we have so many, so many grants and so many really moving pieces.
So to be clear, your debate right now internally around general fund or other, the other refers to the grant funds that are not time-limited the way our fiscal is?
Correct, correct.
Quite simply that, no more, no less than that?
Right.
Okay, all right.
And other things, you know, in other years, again, going back to knowing exactly where we are, a lot of times, we did have a freeze on. So we don't have a freeze on, people are not going over budget. But there are some balances that I will be talking to, you know, principals and department heads about, just to, you know, make sure that they have needs for this. And that's something that I'll be doing the next week or so. I kind of hinted that to the admin team yesterday. So it's really, it's no excuses, it's just a year like no other, that we have so many external funds and just trying to make sure that we, I have the whole picture and that I can, that I can show you all. Because there's just so many, there's so many moving parts, my long way of saying that. But again, we're in good shape, especially for this time of year. Usually, we have about $700,000 or $800,000 in our remaining balance at this time. So that's really good news.
This is great news. And can I just say, let's keep this in the context of, you planned this in the beginning of a pandemic when we had no idea what anything was gonna look like? I mean, we look at this, and the various reports are so close, I'm amazed. I would just say, kudos, both on the budgeting and the managing of it all. I think this is really impressive, and in both districts, but just really impressive how it's been managed all year.
Good team effort.
Yeah, I think, yeah, there's been just a real conscientiousness about use of funds this year that goes well into the buildings and the day-to-day work with kids. Not to the point where we were slowed up, but just a real thoughtfulness. And I think we learned a lot about what's more expensive in hybrid and where those costs go. Remote, we know, saves money. And then the full return had some wrinkles that we didn't predict, but were able to manage. So gone well.
I think you now truly understands the cycle. Don't send us anything that's over budget, request a transfer beforehand, get three quotes, use the tech bid, use, you know, there's not a sole source for anything, for the most part, and get the best price. And I think that's something that we've instilled on everybody now, and they're making their dollars go longer and farther.
Jared, I want to put a question your way, and I don't want to put you on the spot, meaning I don't need a response right now. But I'm curious, because of the unknowns that we all coped with and you managed, do you have fiscal '22 expenses that you have great reservations about because they are in part COVID or health-related that may prove to be entirely unnecessary? Do we have, what's the level of our guesswork here? Because guesswork is okay in these times.
Yeah.
And a budget is an elaborate guess and a well-informed one, but you have more, what's the expression, you have more unknown external threats than you've ever had before, even though the health crisis seems to be waning, we're not out of it yet. So do you have carryover expenses that you might regret? Or do you have carryover expenses COVID-related, moving to fiscal '22, that you can abandon later? Or do you have carryover expenses COVID-related, moving to fiscal 22 that you can abandon later on? And again, rhetorical questions, don't need an answer right now. It's kind of shares, I'm trying to share my way of thinking with you.
I have a little list off the top of my head. Want to know my thought? You know, I think PPE is a big one, like today, because we're not wearing masks outside suddenly. We made sure we pushed out boxes of masks to the schools. The kids have been great. They come to school with a mask or two and they get through the day. Now we've got kids in and out of masks constantly, and we wanted to be sure there was a backfill there in case they needed them. So the unknowns of how the PPE is gonna work is one. I think the the biggest one for me is the remote learning. Is there a going to be a mandate with the elementary school kids because the vaccine won't have caught up to them yet? Our parents still gonna have that option. That's a big one, and we didn't budget for it. It's a contingency cost. If it is a mandate. Those are the two big ones. And then the level of supervision, we've had these students supervisors at the middle and high school that first served when remote teachers weren't there, now they're helping with lunch. What's gonna be our level of need for protocols in different points of the day? That mean we still may need a little more assistance with supervision. Those are my big drivers.
And I would agree with all three of us, the staffing, the supervisors. I mean, one of the good things about a later budget process is, you know, we were able to vet this, you know, early. We we got to do it, you know, two months ago rather than five months ago.
Yeah.
So, you know, we vetted all of this. I will say that we did an excellent job as a, as a, as a team, getting ahead of the PPE in ordering it. And just being able today to deliver a thousand kid masks to each elementary school as well as the middle school. Russ has basically said, I got it. And I I had faith in it that he did. You know, he he really got a handle on all the PPE from, from day one. We, we, we got ahead of it. We beat a lot of the, the, the price gouging and the surges. I really can honestly say everything that people needed this year, for the most part, we were able to provide through already having it in stock. You know, we weren't in reactionary mode. We, we, even though we went into this all blindly, we used all of the recommendations that Desi gave us and CDC, et cetera. And and I will give a, a big shout out to the nurses and the lists that they got us back in July and August and saying, this is what we need, and here are the numbers that we needed. You know, Lisa and Meg, amazing, and their numbers helped. So and then again, going forward, you know, I I think we're ready for it. I think, as Laurie said, the staffing in the unknowns there, I will say, you know, the special ed tuitions are always unknowns. But other than that, I I think we're gonna be in good shape with the, what we plan on carrying over. And I always said I was a little worried about 23. And I can say now that I'm less worried about 23 and looking towards 24. So I I think we're, I think we're set up. As long as we do not spend money on things that are gonna create cliffs. That is Desi's biggest warnings. You spend it on one-time items. You don't do things that are gonna cost you in the future. And we've lived by that, and I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be just fine going forward.
Thank you. So notwithstanding COVID fatigue, what is in, in your wheelhouse, Laurie and Jared, is the capacity to continue to pivot fast if you've got these big questions that have to be answered about the, the level and the kind of supervision. The, the level and the kind of health attenderness. You mentioned masks. And so I think it's not inappropriate to ask this. In regard to the Desi changes in mask protocols, is it safe to say that does nothing to change our commitment to in-school testing?
No, not at all. In fact, it makes us want to reinforce it more as we loosen protocol and really wanna promote the testing we hit. We did test almost 2,000 kids last week, so that's up from where it was. I saw just earlier today, we have not abandoned the marketing and the push to ask this of people. The nurses made a little video that they did with, it was actually with Eva's daughter, I think. And that we're gonna push out as a promotion, a little more information to families. So we're still, still actively really trying to ask people to participate. Laurie.
When Desi and the CDC are not aligned, we pay special attention, as we expect you to.
Yeah.
Laurie, do we have any word whether this pooled testing program will continue to be funded next year? I forget.
Through the summer is all we know.
Okay.
So we are planning on participating with any students we support in person over the summer. We don't know anything about the fall.
Okay.
Laurie, regarding operations, as we're just at CPS. Have you had a chance to have a solid conversation with the administrators at the middle school about what they might want to keep that's relatively inexpensive in terms of these classroom supervisors?
We have not had that conversation yet. Somewhat because things keep changing and we're juggling all these day-to-day, you know, we're doing MCAS this week on top of changing protocols, on top of last fire drills and and all of that. So we certainly will debrief as the year comes to a close and project what we think we need going forward.
And because of my conflict of interest, I'm not advocating for that.
Didn't even think of that, but okay.
Just to be clear, but I, I, I just do get the feeling that, you know, they, they might be something to think about.
Yeah, I mean, we've needed them, in, in the way we were able to reallocate them as the year went on mattered greatly, you know? Thank goodness that we were able to bring the remote teachers back simultaneously as we brought all the kids back. So we could free those supervisors up to the other duties that we needed with the expansion of lunch and some of those other places. So you're correct, there's definitely been very valuable use of.
And what we're talking about before, you know, MCAS, you know, things that don't require a license, right?
Yeah.
For the most part, I could be wrong.
No, correct. You can, yes, correct.
So it's just something to think about in terms of perhaps money well spent.
Yep.
But we would never entertain such a thing before COVID.
We would never have entertained it. You're correct. You're correct.
I, I may speak for all of us. I don't know, Jared. I'll appreciate it if, as we close out the fiscal year, you actually accelerate or, or, or increase your communications with us. Because things are moving fast on your end, we, we want to keep up with you.
Yeah. And just so you know, we, well, I will have a lot of communication and, and numbers for you before June 30th. Usually we don't close sometimes in mid-August. So, because what we do is we officially, our last PO can't go through. The books are really closed on July 15th. We get ahead of it. So it will, it will be a summertime close, but I'll have some, some con, pretty concrete numbers to you. But I would say before June 30th.
Good, thank you. And, and we know that June 30th is the, the longest day of the year in, in any government, ours included.
So no vacation until the end of August? Is that what?
I think you shouldn't joke with him about that.
Yeah. I just wanted to quickly respond to two of the things you said, Jared, not specific things, but just in terms of that whole explanation that you just did of how the PP and other things were managed and everything and getting this number. I just, I just want to say out loud that I feel really good and confident in your hands, and I appreciate it. Because I feel like we, we are in very good hands and this budget is being managed so well. And, you know, in your past, I know everyone had such a sense of trust, and so I just want to thank you for that. And then also the other piece is just to highlight what you said about you've changed, you and the team and everybody doing it have changed the way they're thinking about spending, sorry, the background noise, but spending and, and how people are budgeting and just making the dollar last longer. And I just wanted to go back to that because that's something that doesn't show up as a line item that you can highlight to us. And yet, it's one of the things that'll make the biggest difference going forward. I mean, that makes a huge difference going forward in terms of mindset, just to shift a mindset is one of the hardest changes that you can make and yet most effective. So you mentioned that, and we all kind of glossed over it, I think. And then I was, I just wanted to go back to it and say, wow, thank you for changing a mindset. That's huge.
A lot of that's, oh, go ahead, Jared.
Just, I, I will say a couple, you know, a couple of middle school chairs, a couple of chairs at the high school actually said this year that they enjoy the process because they, they understand it and every, it's truly spelled out for them. And and they, once they did the budget, they used to forget, what the heck did I budget? But now it's all spelled out for them. But more importantly, next year, when we start the budget, which is like four months away, they have a, a great starting place. And it's, everyone's afraid, zero base, zero base. Well, I said this before, it's the only way I know how to do it. And but it's, it's, you build, you still build off the year prior. But you, you do start at zero. What do you need? You have lists, so. But thank you for that, in, in those kind words. It's team effort.
Can't believe it. Not only the finance committee loves you, but the department chairs like budgeting now. I mean, incredible. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Laurie. Let's move on to capital planning. I think this is where we turn to both Laurie and Cynthia. Both of you serve on the town's.
Jared, too, all three of us.
Jared, okay, we are well represented. Thank you.
I think Cynthia is gonna take lead on this.
There we go. Beginning. Okay, how am I doing?
Perfect, good.
I'm going to, I want to thank Elise Woodward, who put together these expert slides. I'm gonna move through them not too quickly, but I'm not gonna read you every, every slide. So if, if you're losing your way, if we're using too many acronyms, if, you know, this isn't at all clear to you, please stop me and let me know. So here's our current roster. So we have Mr. Crane and a couple, mostly other town officials and a couple of citizens. So here's the agenda for the presentation. Let me give you a little background and the charge. Our options analysis and the draft recommendations. And this is where we want input from the school committee, particularly on the ref recommendations. So our charge, September 2019, quite a long time ago. Process for townwide capital planning and a 10-year time horizon updated annually. So basically, a 10-year plan updated annually. And we're supposed to finish March 2020. We took a pause, like many other committees. And we're now trying to scramble and get it done by June 30th, 2021, which seemed like a reasonable goal, but now seems a little bit of a stretch. So a little background. We were charged with identifying a process for anticipating and funding very large projects of 5 million or greater that may require a debt exclusion, including criteria for evaluating projects, timing and prioritizing, protecting from climate impacts, balancing competing priorities, and balancing affordability and smoothing debt obligation. So we confirmed some of the options analysis. We confirmed the authority of the town manager in our town charter for capital planning. We reviewed best practices from other towns and the Mass Municipal Association. Consider pros and cons of a standing capital planning committee versus enhancing the existing process. And we collected the public comment and considered three different options.
What does the first bullet mean?
So our, so we just, basically, the town charter gives the town manager basically the authority to do all facilities planning.
So you, you reaffirmed it and put this advisory group next to the manager?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So that, so just expand on that a little bit. The, the select board does have the authority, though, to appoint a standing capital committee to do this planning. That's in the Mass General Law. Is just, it's a little murky, but essentially the charter does give him the authority.
So because it's a little murky, this was a clarification exercise, so to speak.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
Oopsie, that's not what I wanted to do. Did I go backwards? Okay, sorry. So I'm not gonna read you this whole slide. But this is the, the option. So maintain status quo. Enhance or modify the process of the advisory standing committee. And I would say that we were very, I think we did a lot of deliberation. Laurie, Jared, correct me if I'm wrong about this, the standing capital committee. But we came down to the point that we felt like we could achieve many of the things that we thought were encompassed by the standing capital committee in the enhanced process. So that was the rationale there. Okay, so here we go. Here's the. So a long-term capital planning process for very large projects be adopted by a select board and school committee incorporating the following elements. The long-term capital plan, project evaluation criteria, a, a process to create and update the long-term plan, and a timetable for presentations of long-term capital plan in public forums to encourage input from citizens. We, we heard a lot of feedback that citizens didn't feel like they had a way to participate in this discussion. So we tried to make that sort of the core of the, the process that we're recommending. So very large project, as I said, referred to as a tier-three project, often got a bond, projects that are bonded, essentially, large projects. So cost of 5 million, or a project is two or more phases, totally 5 million or more. That's a little bit difficult to see, see in the future, in my opinion. But we wanted to make sure that it was there so people kind of think that way, especially with the land acquisition. Well, you know, the land is free or is very low cost, but what are you gonna have to do with it once you acquire it? So to think that way. And then codification of this into a process. So we probably need to think about a, is it AAP, APP? And the town side, and then a school policy on our side, just to codify this. Now, this is a long one. So this is sort of project criteria linked to sustainability. So I won't read through the whole thing, and I'm, I will send out these slides to the committee. After this, they were not linked. So develop a debt template, which is on the next screen, to summarize and present future tier-three very large projects. So basically, you're trying to plug in projects that you know might be coming downstream and sort of look at what the debt impact would be on a sort of spreadsheet with formulas. That's correct.
Could you give me a moment on the previous slide?
Sure. Go ahead.
Don't have any questions, just want to read it with care.
So I think sustainability, you know, in, in many ways, so, you know.
That was helpful. Thank you.
No problem. So so the template we made, so priorities, project timing and debt sequencing with the template. Don't even try to read that, but it just sort of shows you the years and the projects and then, you know, estimated cost and how you would plug that, those in. And then also include existing large debt.
These are cost runs, and it implies debt leveling.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So here's a timeline for the recommendations. So in September, joint meeting of the select board and school committee to present draft long-term capital plan for public comment. November, town managers, school superintendent present long-term capital plan to FinCon with focus on long-range impact to town. with focus on long-range impact to town finances. In December, joint meeting of select board and school committee to discuss and approve revised long-term capital plan and incorporate specific spending into a warrant. I believe to one of these, we're trying to call a forum, but none of this, not to bring that feedback, we wanted to be sure to have a public forum because I think people are concerned about the ability of citizens to really participate when we just had public comment. So we initially talked about a hearing, but we realized the legal implications of that were really unnecessary, so we turned one of these into a forum. Lori, wasn't that your memory?
Definitely.
So, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
It's in the report, I think it just didn't make it to the slide.
Mm-hmm. So discussion, you know, I know, I could tell you many hours and hours of discussion when it's all of this, so, you know, sort of, making it this brief doesn't do it justice. But really, the goal is, I think there are many concerns about what's looming in front of us after the middle school project. You know, we, let's be honest with our taxpayers, what's coming down the road for the next 10 years in terms of large projects, and that's really the goal of, I think, what we're proposing in a nutshell. And, you know, it's not terribly complicated, but I think executing this will give people a lot more confidence in our overall budgeting, because we never really, we always do a five-year, I'd say, call it tier-one and tier-two capital plan, but we've not done something. It seems like a 10-year outlook for a large capital plan is reasonable, whereas a 10-year outlook for tier-one and two, I think, is pretty much silliness. You know, five years is hard enough to do.
Certainly not where we start our work, yeah. This is, this is excellent. I've certainly got some comments, but I want to turn to my colleagues' first questions.
I'll just make one comment, Cynthia did a great job of summarizing. I don't think I've sat on a committee before that just tried to build a process without having an actual task in front of them, and it did lead to this real high-level conceptual, because you're not distracted by that. I think the first part of them, and you saw we've met for almost a year and a half or better, the first meetings, we're trying to pull ourselves away from the inclination to stick to a project and really talk process. So it's been, been really a different experience, I think, to talk only process without an actual, you know, formative, concrete question in front of us.
So that might allow for this segue. The reference to an enhanced process means this committee would have a shelf life that would expire as soon as school committee and select board owned it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I applaud any valuable effort that brings select board and school committee together in the same room, because we collectively do the town's business and rarely share the room, so this is a superb opportunity to do so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I saw the single meeting outlined for the two committees to be in a room. Would that be all, do you think that that would be all it would take on an annual basis to conduct the entirety of that annual business if there is no longer a standing committee?
So Ms. Woodward would, she would here would say, yeah, the committee is going away. So I think we would have a policy on both the town side and the school side. They would outline this as close as possible to what we're seeing here, but it really is up to the select board to accept and then work with us on the exact process. So I would think that would occur over the summer sometime, but I could be wrong. But, so I think the idea is to give people room to digest, especially for the first year, as we've never done this before, and I think then going forward, it would probably be less complicated unless there was a major change to the 10-year plan.
Okay.
So it would be outlined, so September, we'd have the meeting. November, the FinCom, one of these is a forum, and I think it's through November, I think FinCom is the forum, if my memory is correct. And then December, again, we would meet after we maybe got feedback in that November meeting and approve the plan in December.
I see.
Yeah. So the first year is definitely going to be a bit of a, it's going to be more than the subsequent years, I would think.
Okay. Yeah, because if the plan becomes sort of a 10-year plan, do we need to continually solicit comment from citizens? Would that, would they be able to continue to contribute annually in this forum?
So here's my two cents on this.
Yeah.
The elected and officials change, and citizens change, and they change their minds. So they might, we might present a plan, we get feedback the first year, let's say.
Yeah.
Somebody comes new onto select board of school committee, somebody changes their mind about the plan. Yeah, you know, they say, well, let's move this.
Oh, no, you know, I would encourage more, not less, opportunity for feedback, and I guess that was going to lead to my next question. Do we feel, do we feel that a single forum is sufficient to gather feedback? Not that I want to create more work for anybody, but do we feel that there a single forum that would be held in November, a time frame I like, by the way, for a lot of reasons, would be sufficient to gather feedback?
It's a good point. I mean, honestly, I think we're going to have to have a, I hate to say it, a pilot, and this is going to be written.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, it's, when I even think about, for example, these large school projects, I'm finding that there are varying degrees to which people pay attention, and then if they're not, you know, I almost feel sometimes, like unless the opportunity to contribute is truly brought on a domed silver platter to your front door, oftentimes, people are not finding these public forums. And similarly, like I remember when I was working with the library, doing, working at the beginning of their project here, it was really hard to reach people, and we were struggling to figure out ways how to reach our diverse citizenry, and, I don't know, and then, but then, even though these committees think they do, and really do give a best effort to advertise far and wide these opportunities to contribute civically, you then sort of get the last-minute kind of entrance, and I just, I don't know, I just, I worry about, my only feedback would be, and I, again, I hate to make more work for everybody because I know that we are all really going over and above, but I don't know, just, I'm concerned about a single opportunity. I could have said that in one sentence, I guess.
And I just want to be clear, these are going to be very high level, so we're not going to be saying, here's the design for the future, I know we wouldn't make a mention of any particular project, but it's going to be like an S, you know, a guess, and I'll use the acronym, a guess about this is going to cost us X, and maybe the feedback will be, where did that number come from, right? Where, how did you come up with that number? But this is just going to be very high level, and anything that then gets peeled off of this 10-year capital plan to actually.
Those committees?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
I mean, depending on the size of the project, if it's, you know, if it's just $5 million, maybe not, but if it's above that, I would think.
Yeah, I just even think, you know, we're talking about, I think, like, the philosophical out, like, way we're allocating this money, I think, is really what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I mean, just an idea to give citizens an idea, well, we think we have these five big projects, four, or we're looking to buy land to do X, or we're waiting to do X because we need land. So those kinds of conversations, and so how are we sequencing it? Well, we really need land to do X, I'm not even going to, so it's just, it's those kinds of conversations, and I'm hoping that not having a committee, which would then require that citizens to go to a lot of, a lot more meetings, where we thought, well, you know what, let's just try to shine a light on it at a few times during the year, instead of having a separate committee, which would then require an investment of volunteers, staff, et cetera, et cetera. So it's going to be a pilot, we'll see how this goes.
I think it looks excellent, frankly.
So, but I think you're right, I mean, this is the, this is the problem, one of the problems we were trying to solve, is people thought that they were not, where was this information? I don't, I don't see this being discussed, so, and I think there were some valid points in that, so.
It's really challenging, media has become so fragmented, you know, if even 10 years ago, you could reliably, you know, put something in the journal and know that people were going to see it, and I think it's more challenging now with sort of the loss of that as sort of the central voice. I don't know.
Cynthia, I wonder if I could bring another item in, Alexa, if that's okay?
Of course.
Your points are well taken. The regional school district is a completely independent political entity. Nonetheless, at the end of the day, Concord bears its share of those regional capital costs. What has been the discussion about the, let's call it, the interface between this committee and the regional school district and its capital needs, if any?
So, I, you know, technically, the regional committee really can't take a policy saying the town of Concord, select board and finance committee and Concord School Committee is going to give them a.
Right, so, and so I use that delicate term interface. Just, are we mindful that that other entity is down the street with capital needs, with a direct impact on Concord citizens? That's completely rhetorical, you and I know the answer.
Absolutely, I'm just trying to think, you know, I'd have to go off, we'd have to get count, you know, like, I'm just trying to think, I think we, so my thinking is, I think we need another mechanism, and I think that's why, I think we need some refinements to our five-year capital plan, because I don't think we have, we're envisioning another large capital project at the high school.
Agreed, agreed, yeah, I don't want to put fear into anybody's.
Not over $5 million, no. Nothing close.
So, just, I mean, that's what we expect in the next 10 or 15 years, I mean, I guess it can't really look, you know, 20 or something. So I think, though, we do have to be mindful of our five-year capital plan tier-one and two, because this all adds up, I think that's it, the end of the day, all of these things add up. So they're not, it's not something that we shouldn't have a conversation about, but I'll bring that feedback back to the committee for sure.
No, I'm very content, I think I'm simply saying, saying this for the record so that nobody could believe we're not mindful of the fact that the district will continue to have low-level capital needs as compared to these high-kier ones that this committee will manage, that's all, thank you. Other comments, questions?
I'll just comment briefly, Cynthia, when this was coming up, my thought was, oh, boy, I, you know, this is going to be confusing, and there's no way they're going to be able to come up with a concise, clear plan, because what, just what a mess of a big, like, like you said, there's no specific project to look at, it was so just nebulous at the beginning, what you guys were trying to do, and I'm really impressed, you just went through a presentation that's really clear and great recommendations, and I feel like it all makes a lot of sense, and I'm really impressed, well done.
Our, well, I think our chair led us to consensus, worked with us to find consensus, so Ms. Woodward is, and has been an excellent chair, and I cannot give her enough credit for making this process successful, so.
Well, well done, I think it looks really good.
So we'll be back in September.
All right.
Well, I'm sure we'll be having dialogue with the select board this summer, just to finish this up. I don't think it's going to be lengthy, but I think there will be some, because there could be new, two new members on our, a new school committee member and a new select board member, so. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Cynthia.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe somebody who's a parliamentarian can help me on this one. We did not note on our agenda, public comments, so I think that opportunity would be appropriate, and I do see one of our colleagues on the town side, Terry Ackerman, among us, Terry, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, Court. Yeah, great presentation, Cynthia, thank you, Lori and Jared for participating, and Elise was absolutely wonderful, I totally agree. I just wanted to clarify one comment that Alexa made. Excellent question, Alexa, on that last slide, you guys are the guinea pigs, we haven't been to the select board yet. This is great, we, there is a typo on that slide, and Alexa, you're absolutely right, there are two opportunities for public forum and a 45-day comment period, and so we need to update that slide, it is an old version, and if, I don't remember exactly, but I think the first, I don't know how hard it is to show that slide again. We probably don't need to do it, but.
One second, Terry.
I'm so glad you asked this question, Alexa, because we have a lot of debate about the public comment. Okay, right, that slide, so when it says September, I believe there will, that will be a very brief presentation to present the draft capital plan, and then most of that meeting is going to be public comment, public forum, I don't remember exactly how we called it, and then followed by the 45-day comment period, if people prefer to comment in writing. Because one of the critiques was that at the select board meetings, at the school committee meetings, public comment comes at the end, and sort of an afterthought and whatever, and so the meeting in September is going to be for the public to really discuss, and then in November, again, after the FinCom raises their issues, the public will again be invited to comment. So we will redraft that slide, thank you for being the guinea pigs and helping us realize we have the old version in there.
Thank you, and thanks for being so timely with the clarification, appreciate it, Terry, thanks for being here. Any other public comments before we wind things up for the evening at the rare hour for this school committee of 7:45? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second, please.
Second.
And with thanks to Lori and Jared and everybody who support you to bring the information necessary for a very productive meeting, thank you both, and then thanks for those, to those who joined us tonight in the audience for being here, we appreciate it. A roll call, please.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Out, I.
Radio.
Very good, have a nice evening, all, thank you.
Bye, guys.
Bye-bye.